At this time, we always like to start our meetings out with an invocation and pledge allegiance. Today, the invocation will be given by Reverend Luigi Bersiskey.
Luigi.
Luigi. Oh, sorry.
That's good enough.
Hershey Shetty.
Hershey Shetty. Sorry. I don't speak Italian. We'll proceed with that.
All right.
Thank you. I know Italian names are very difficult in Utah because there's not that many of us around. But anyhow, I'm honored to be here as a member of the interfaith council to pray for our commissioners and for the people's needs. So with that, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to open our hearts one another. You know the needs of each and every one of us. You know the concerns that we have, that our needs be fulfilled. Allow our commissioners to listen with an open heart and with the wisdom to discern the needs of our entire community and to listen with love and kindness as each one approaches them, make their petitions of whatever particular needs they have. You know, as a community, you have a variety of needs, and each one needs to be met in its own due time. We thank you for this opportunity to have this wonderful commission to listen to our needs and to respond with their wisdom and their kindness, and so it is. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Beautiful. We'd also now would like to invite Cadet Karen, she was going to remind me, from Dixie High School Junior ROTC. Please come forward.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I believe this is the first time we had the ROTC come in to give the pledge allegiance, and I think that's great. So I noticed we have several individuals in the audience that generally doesn't come to our meetings. Would you want to stand up here on the left and tell us who you represent and what you're here for?
Well, I'm here representing Dixie's FFA, and we're here to present to you guys about agricultural issues.
Okay. Which item is that?
Item number two.
Item number two. Perfect.
That is great.
Okay, well, thank you. Look forward to that. All right, to start our meeting, we always start with the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Before, I'd like to pull a couple items.
And I've got your cutouts. Which ones do you want to cut out?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull two abatement applications for review. One is the property serial number 1-SE-B-10, and actually, I believe they're both, one's for one year and one's for the other. So it's the same applicant.
So I'll go ahead with my motion, and your desire to pull that, we'll then make that the first item of business on our regular agenda.
Very good.
And so with that comment from Commissioner Iverson, I make a motion in support of consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment for February 24, 2018 through March 20, 2018. Consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of February 20, 2018, and special meeting minutes of February 23, 2018. Consideration of administrative adjustments for real property. Consideration of administrative adjustments, personal property. And with Commissioner Iverson's exception noted, consideration of the other property tax abatements, I think there are four others, and consideration for application for settlement or deferral of property taxes, of which there is one. Consideration of approval of the wildland fire budget between Washington County and the Utah Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands for calendar year 2018. And consideration of Phase II fish-machine rental agreement between Ecolab and Washington County Correctional Facility. Item I, consideration of lease agreement between Xerox Financial Services LLC and the Washington County Sheriff's Office. And finally, item J, consideration of annual maintenance agreement between Action Target, Inc. and the Washington County Sheriff's Office. That would be my motion with Commissioner Iverson's exception.
Commissioners, can I just make a clarification? So are you wanting the both of the years polled for the...
Yes.
Okay, because maybe what we could do is on the 2018, it doesn't have that property serial number. It's actually an account number, which is 0084056. So I just thought maybe if we could include that.
Yeah, very good. Looking for that. Thank you.
We have motion.
I second that motion.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Considering an item was polled for the agenda, that's the first item. And so at this time, we will consider the application of property tax abatement for the tax items we're polled.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we deny these two applications or this one application. I'm not sure how we're considering it. Abatements are something that, you know, they have certain criteria that we usually consider, very extreme circumstances, disabled veterans, other types like that. There's usually age requirements as well. As I reviewed this application, it just didn't seem to meet those extreme hardships that we...
And Commissioner Iverson, I'll add into that. The state statutes provide which properties qualify, and the clerk auditor is able to approve those. And the only ones that come to us are the ones that do not qualify and are looking for special consideration from the commission when it's in the best interest of the public to grant. So I will second your motion that they be denied.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number one of our regular agenda items is presentation of a 2018 Victims of Crime Act grant application for the Children's Justice Center. We have Selinda Larson.
Hi, I'm just going to talk about our VOCA application. The VOCA grant that we applied for in 2017 was actually a two-year grant, but we've decided to try and get mental health services covered through the VOCA grant. So we will be applying for new money through VOCA. In April is when it's due. We're hoping that we can kind of be a one-stop shop at the Children's Justice Center and that we can deal with children who need therapy and don't have insurance. So that's one of the things that we'll be looking for is monies to either hire a part-time therapist or to contract out with therapists here that do trauma work with children. The other thing that we completed, and I'm sure that you guys know about it, is in October of last year, we opened a medical room in the Children's Justice Center last year. From October to December, we served about 30 kids. And our numbers at the end of last year were 342 children that we had served at the center. So that's included in the VOCA grant. This year, we've served 63 kids at the center and done interviews with them. So there really isn't much of a difference between the 2017 grant and the one that we're going to be applying for this year, except for the mental health portion.
So just to make the audience aware, what the Children's Justice Center is, is when we have a child that has been either sexually abused or mentally abused or have any type of abuse, instead of taking them to the police station where it's kind of a hard environment, they take them, we have a special place where we take them, and it looks like a house. And you go in there, and there's a fish tank, and there's stuffed animals, and it's a very comfortable place. And that's where they'll actually do the interviews. And one of the things that we've been doing is that after these kids have been abused, instead of taking them to the emergency room, where it's also a harsh environment, they will actually do the medical exams in the facilities by a licensed doctor. And now we're looking at, some of these kids need a little bit more counseling too, and that's what this additional grant's going for.
Questions?
To me, it's so, I'm so grateful that we have it, but I'm so sad that we have it.
Right. Catch 22.
So, Selinda, you're not looking for an approval at this time by the commission. You're just here to present and let them know.
No. So the VOCA grant requires that we present twice a year to a governing board. So this is just counting as our heads up, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work and service.
Item number two is a presentation of the Antiquities Act by the Dixie High School Future Farmers of America. Stand up and introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Dave Gust. I've been teaching Dixie High for 26 years. It's a privilege to be in front of you, Commissioners. We appreciate what you do for us. Part of this scholarship competition that these students are involved with is to make community groups aware. And this is a great platform for us to be able to introduce to you and those who are either on film or here with us today in the chambers about what's going on with an agricultural issue. We've been looking this past year at the Antiquities Act, based clear back in 1906 by President Roosevelt. And these students have done an outstanding job researching the pros and cons of this issue. Their presentation is too long to give to you entirely today. It's 15 minutes. We've only asked for just a few minutes to get your input and hopefully have either one of you or your secretary send us a letter in behalf of good luck and what these students are trying to accomplish at this stage in their lives. So I'm going to have the team quickly just stand up over here. I'm not going to introduce each of them individually, but we will have a chance to ask a couple of questions at the end. Our presentation is called "The Antiquities Act, Is It Broken?" And our job is not to provide a solution. The students are to provide you with information so that you personally can decide which side of the issue you stand on and how relevant and important it is to the state of Utah. As many of us know in this room, 86% of our state is either state or federally ran lands. And the Antiquities Act has played a huge role in what's going on with our state. With President Trump's visit here past December, it's impacted greatly what's going on with monument status. And that's kind of where we'll take you. We have a student who'll be playing the teacher role. He and she, we have two of them, they're going to just briefly talk to you as if we are standing out on the monument. And then we'll give you just a brief synopsis, and they're going to do their summary. And then we'll just close with the gratitude of all of you that are here, those that are in their homes as well as those of you in the chambers, that we appreciate you being aware of the issues, staying current, that this affects each and every one.
Thank you.
Okay, here we are. We are standing in one of the most controversial areas in the United States, and it's in our backyard. So before our guest from Washington DC, right, let's go over our talking points of why the Antiquities Act has been so contentious. Logan and Jackson, will you give us a brief statement of the issue?
The Antiquities Act, created in 1906 by Congress under the direction of President Roosevelt, was intended to protect archaeological sites by making them illegal crime and included presidential power to prevent any sites from being homesteaded or claimed.
And the Presidential Proclamation Act was initially intended to set aside all these small archaeological sites, but it has recently been used to set aside enormous monuments, sometimes exceeding 1 million acres, and to restrict traditional uses of public lands by grazing.
TJ and Shaler, could you give us a reason why it's an important issue?
Yeah, 13 presidents have used the Antiquities Act to proclaim 125 national monuments, thoroughly nearly 100 million acres, approximately the size of the valley. In and around the state of Utah, presidential declarations have set off fierce political brawls over the importance of impact from local and state officials.
And also, past presidents have only looked at the economic advantage for a particular group, not really looking at the impact on the way of life of those who have lived and cared for these long generations.
Okay, so our year-long journey has brought us here at Bear's Year's National Monument, with mixed emotions and various views about the management and protection of public lands. So the question I pose to you students is this: Antiquities Act, is it broken? Kalista, what do you think our first talking point should be?
I believe we need to look at the presidential authority to proclaim national monuments and if it's still viable in the 21st century.
I think our second talking point needs to address the question about public impact being considered in the national monument designations.
Okay, what do you think our third talking point should be, Shaler? We need to look at the losses to agriculture and other multiple uses of Western traditions to really see if we can justify the economic gain from increased tourism. Oh, here comes the Secretary of Interior, Mr. Zinke, to meet with us now. Hello, Mr. Zinke. Thank you for taking the time to see us in this beautiful area to explain the Antiquities Act and why it's such a disputed issue.
Hey, guys. It's raised to me as young people to see you so interested in that policy, this issue. Let's go back to 1996 when President Clinton designated a series of rock formations and canyons as the Grand Serpent's Head Salami Mine in your state of Utah. Many of your fellow Utahns were furious at this next plan for coal mining and other multiple uses of such a disgrace. One interesting fact about this designation is that your state politicians first learned the plans for this national monument from a newspaper article only nine days before its public announcement. Since this aggressive move, many have questioned the Antiquities Act proclamation, whether it's broken or not. Your teacher reached out to me and said he should give us down this issue and then be beneficial to your future points.
At this point in our presentation, we would go over our points, but due to your precious time, we are going to skip to our summaries.
Ah, you guys are really dug into this issue. Would you feel like some guys are positioned on the issue? And in my committee, I would like to ask some questions.
I will go first. Supporting America's oldest preservation law, the Antiquities Act, is no priority. National monuments preserve significant moments in U.S. history. From the stories of Native Americans, the beginning of the end of slavery, the farmworkers' labor movement. These invaluable places and events weave together the rich story of our American tapestry.
An Antiquities Act that prioritized the local ranchers and true caretakers of the land would be ideal for monument status. Yes, an element of tourism would supplement ranching economies. However, the recent practice of wiping out rural agriculture with sweeping national monument designations is detrimental to the areas protected and to our agricultural professions. The simple answer to the final question is no. None of the trade-offs from rural agriculture to tourism are not worth it.
With the increase of jobs and earnings for tourism, these monuments would be more and more profitable to certain counties as a whole, generating billions of dollars and thousands of jobs. Therefore, I believe that this act is not broken.
Including local impact to the monument designation process is essential in order to create monuments that have little to no controversy. It is important to get local impact because locals are the ones who have to deal with the positive and negative backlash following the monument designation. Yes, I firmly believe the Antiquities Act is broken.
This act is in fact broken because the act states that presidents may only use the smallest amount of land possible to preserve that antiquity. But in recent years, presidents have used their power and used the act to grab large masses of land.
The Antiquities Act has protected our national lands for many years and continues to save our American riches. Turnover within our country over this matter will brought us all here with differing opinions. But nonetheless, this act functions to save those antiquities, regardless of size, location, or local impact. Mr. Zinke, do you and your committee have any questions for us?
I do have just one more question for you all. The Antiquities Act, is it broken? Thank you. We are now open for questions.
It's great. You guys are helpful, Mr. Zinke. My question for you is, you've listened to both sides of this argument. What do you think? Do you think that the Antiquities Act needs to be relooked at and adjusted for greater public or local input?
I believe that I wouldn't have been appointed to review these monuments if there wasn't something that needed to be fixed in the national monument designations of the past and on the future.
You answered that just right there.
See, one of your jobs.
Good job, guys. That's great.
Thank you. I didn't want to interrupt.
Let's do this really quick because we're going to have parents that'll want to watch this. So if you just want to come up and state your name and what grade you're in, that would be perfect.
Perfect. That's all we need to do. Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead. Just go ahead and relax it out.
I'm Sienna Jones. I'm a junior this year.
I'm Emily Lumke, and I'm a senior.
I'm Logan Robertson. I'm a ninth grader.
I'm Shaler Bracken. I'm a senior.
I'm Jonah Larson, and I'm a senior.
I'm Kalista Roberts, and I'm a senior.
I'm Ireland Hall, and I'm a junior.
I'm Dakota Clark, and I'm a junior.
I'm Jackson Van Lee, and I'm a junior too.
I'm Tiger Bracken, and I'm a sophomore.
And alls we need is a really nice letter.
We'll get that for you.
But here's the secret. Because it's a scholarship competition, whoever's going to type it, if you could do it in 18-point font, is that the funniest thing? Yeah, it's 18, because we have to downsize it so much that, just a little bit of history about us too. 25 years, we've had almost 15 teams win or be in the top four in the nation. This is a really special group. You guys are only their second group to present. We're heading up to the governor tomorrow. So thank you for letting us break the ice with you. We appreciate all of you.
It was great. Thank you.
Good job.
That was fun.
Great.
Now we get to the more mundane things. I'm number three.
Oh, come on, Ray.
Not that Ray, sorry, Ray. I don't mean to put you down. But item three is consideration of purchase requests.
Anyway. Okay, so the purchase requisitions come for you today is, the first one is for full-page ads and last, so like internet marketing, that's for $21,480. The second one for tourism is web analytics and content, which are also considered blog posts, and that's for $13,200. And the last one I have for tourism is for a 2018 spread ad and advertorial, and that's for $15,000. And then for the Dixie Center, they need to repair the roof. And the repairs on that are $19,600, for the museum portion of it. And then for the library, they have, they need to upgrade some audiovisual and do some modifications at the Santa Clara Library, Washington Library, and the St. George Library. That's a total of $19,743.12. And then for the roads department, there's, they need some road base, road base for Veo for $12,647.25. And then they also have a blanket PO here for red fuel, which is for a lot of equipment that they have. And it's going to cover, it's an estimated amount to cover the rest of their fuel needs for $75,000 for the year. And then last purchase requisition I have is kind of half sheriff's office, half commission, half emergency services, well, three-quarters anyway, for a software upgrade on, for Spillman Technologies for $17,380. Are there any questions?
Is there a reason why the purchasing agent didn't sign the one for the Spillman?
I did. Oh. That is a pre-copy.
Okay.
To get it to you faster than...
So that has been signed?
You can get it, yeah.
And by for the auditor also?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase request. Ray has so articulately outlined for us.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item four is emergency service report by our own...
Four-and-a-half-year-term Sheriff Pulcifer.
Oh, thank you. And I'm glad Ray went first after your comment, so. Since the last report, we've had a total of 10 more additional calls, which brings the total for the year up to 22. Total man-hours for this last 30 days has been 171 hours. Just going to touch on a couple, mostly because I want to give Commissioner Cox about time. Apparently, we had some individuals stranded near Colob, and there are other cabins up there with cameras on them that were able to see the individual stuck from a homeowner out of Las Vegas and was able to call in to get these individuals some assistance. So lots of people are enjoying all the cameras from the different multiple locations up there, apparently. SAR members able to locate them and get them back out, escorted off the mountain. I'm going to touch on just a couple of them because a lot of the calls that we've been dealing with recently have been medical assists. And on March 9, we responded out to an injured mountain biker on the Gooseberry Mesa Trail and had search and rescue involved with also EMS from Hurricane Valley. And then I think Hildell took the initial on it. But we had a lot of different people that were involved in that. Gal went over the handlebars, was basically reported that she'd broken some ribs and had a few other little minor injuries. Her partner that was with her was able to stay there and help out. Just as medical and the SAR members were getting there, she started having seizures. Then we actually had two different medical issues that we was dealing with.
The partner had seizures?
Yeah, the person that was with her mountain biking started having seizures. But it's an interesting call on this one is, you know, as we're trying to do the triage and figure out what type of medical needs they have, there's so many times that it's so much of it's guesswork, but yet, you know, depends on the amount of level of training and different things. This gal, she was complaining that, yeah, she had the broken ribs and such, but ended up having a lot more serious injuries. We received a really nice email from her husband. I just wanted to read to the commission. "A great group, a great group of you helped rescue and give aid to my wife out on Gooseberry Mesa last Friday. You guys were awesome, and I really appreciate your efforts." As a follow-up, she ended up having five broken ribs and a stage or class V liver laceration. Not sure how she survived it all. Her vitals were surprising when the ER doctors, as well as her surgeon, considered the diagnosis. There's absolutely no way you guys could have known the internal damage. I appreciate all of your efforts and thankful things didn't take a turn for the worse." And this is the part that I just love from this guy. He goes, "When I win the lottery, you can expect a huge donation from my wife and me. Until then, this email will have to do." "All the best to you, and I hope I never need your services again, but if I do, my confidence is high." But it is really nice to receive that thank you back from, you know, the family members and stuff. And we're making sure that all the search and rescue members also get to see that and to know that what they do is appreciated, but it's definitely been busy out there. And the full report I gave, copy to Nicole so that she has that.
Thank you.
I do have this letter that I wanted to just make sure you added that to it.
Thank you so much for all that you do.
Pass our thanks on to the search and rescue members for all that they constantly do.
Tell another, he actually was helping us with a search and rescue call just here recently.
Oh, yeah.
But his brand-new Duramax is a little bit too heavy to go off-roading in deep snow. That same week with that storm, deputies also assisted in four additional calls that they were able to handle without assistance of search and rescue, but it has been that busy.
I'd like to caution all of our viewers out there that might be watching on the TV that a lot of these roads that, on the south sides especially, as we look north to Pine Valley and things look like, hey, the snow is melting and all is good. The road can take a turn and be in a shaded area, or you can hit adrift. And it's really, really treacherous right now. And I'd say we have more of these pullout calls at this time of the year than any other time. And so be careful and cautious.
Talking to a couple of our private towing companies that do the off-road towing and stuff, they, they've just been going nonstop. Colob, Danish Ranch Road, General Springs, people always seem to want to try and get up through those backroads and that dirt. And it's, right now, it's really deep mud.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Item number five, consideration of ordinance number 2018-111130 and ordinance amending the Washington County Procurement Code. And we have our attorney, Eric, addressing that issue.
So Commissioners, we're proposing a change, add another exception to the procurement code. A change, if you're looking in your packet, is on page 111 of your packet. And our purchasing, our procurement code requires formal bids to be obtained anytime that something is over $50,000 in value. With our Public Works Department, we've run into issues sometimes with that. To go out and ask companies to put together big formal bids for $60,000 worth of road base is just a tough thing to go and ask them to do. So what we're proposing is that for the acquisition of road maintenance, construction materials to be used for road maintenance and repair projects, that that limit would be raised to $200,000. Would be a specific call-out in that code, just to make sure that as we move forward, they can practically go out, go ahead and get multiple bids still, but not... go out, go ahead and, and get multiple bids still, but not have to go through the formal bidding process, which takes our businesses a lot more time to put together.
Makes sense. That the only change? I thought I saw some.
There, there are a couple of other parts earlier on to, to conform to this, to, to call out, if it's over fifty thousand dollars, unless there's an exception, and refers back to the exception, just to make sure that it reads well.
Thank you, Eric, and, and thank you for your effort to look at our code and make sure that it's as efficient as it can be, and I, it's a full-time job, I realize that. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, in support of Resolution R. Two thousand eighteen, twenty-three oh-six. A resolution appropriating, oh, that's, I, yes, I checked it. Consideration of Ordinance Number Two Thousand Eighteen, eleven, thirteen, dash, oh, and ordinance amending the Washington County Procurement Code. I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Item number six, consideration of Resolution Number R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, dash, twenty-three oh-six. A resolution appropriating expenditures of funds collected as the unincorporated area of Washington County share of the recreation arts and park sales tax. And Commissioner Iverson?
Very good. As most people know, a few years ago, the voters, uh, passed, uh, what's known as the RAP tax. Um, most of that is, uh, based on point-of-sale and population. Um, most of it goes back to our communities. There's two parts that the county deals with. One is, um, that, that goes to culture and arts, and then the other is, is the amount that is, um, given out in unincorporated areas. So we've sent that out to places like Veo, Diamond Valley, other places that, if they have certain neighborhood projects that they would like to, to us to consider, and so they've put together different bids and proposals, and that's what we have here today, so. I'd like to recognize Paul Fellshaw's effort in reaching out to groups and putting this all together. Yeah. And also, uh, when this goes out in the unincorporated areas, we make sure that any of these RAP funds are put on public properties and/or nonprofits, so that we're compliant with the, all of the areas of the applicable statute. And Commissioner, you've worked hard on that as well. Thank you. I'd make a second motion if made the motion.
Here we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number seven, consideration of Resolution Number R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, dash, twenty-three oh-seven. A resolution approving a concept plan for a restroom facility at the Purgatory Clay Venue of Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park. We have Ron, our Public Works Director.
Thank you for allowing me to be down below the mundane items on the agenda. Uh, this shotgun venue is wishing to construct another restroom facility out there for their big shoots, so they'll have adequate facilities for the people that are out there using their shotgun area. They would like to get a building permit as soon as they get all their building plans submitted and proceed with putting the restroom facility up.
What funds are they using to build the facility?
Uh, they've got donations, I believe, for their venue that they're using to build that with. They've not asked for anything out of our budget for it, anyway.
So, uh, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Oh-Seven. A resolution approving a concept plan for restroom facilities at Purgatory Clay Venue, Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park. And, um, we do have to celebrate that we now have water to flush these toilets with, which is, uh, something we were able to get in this year, so.
We have a motion in a second on the bathroom facilities. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number eight, consideration of Resolution Number R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Oh-eight. A resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Bureau of Land Management, the county, and Dixie Power for ex, for the expansion of the southern, of the expansion of the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park and additional, and addition of power lines. And on this one, we have Ron also.
Thanks, Commissioners. This is for the shotgun venue also. Uh, just north of the shotgun venue and outside of our shooting sports park, we have a large substation that's kind of a project, joint project between Hurricane and UAMPS and Dixie Power. And part of that, uh, large project is they need to run additional power lines in and out to serve the various areas. And two of these power lines were scheduled to run south across the road into the shooting sports park venue, just barely running east a short distance and then running outside of the current area, south, the point where it would intersect where Purgatory Road would go. But we're looking at increasing that area of the shooting sports park, adding some additional area down there for the shotgun venue. And so it would've conflicted, but we're trying to work with the utility companies, making sure their power lines are moved through there, and they're willing to work with us to make sure there's not a liability issue there, building a little bigger power structures and taking us off the hook for any shortfall that might fall in that area. So, we've, we've given the BLM and the power company a MOU to sign with the county that basically states they can put their power lines inside that proposed area and we won't object to it, and Dixie Power won't object to us adding additional ground to the outside of that.
There has been some concern from the venue that this is an encroachment or a potential encroachment, but, you know, we always need to weigh, um, you know, the public benefit, the public good. And, um, I believe that I'm comfortable with, with approving this, especially given the fact that, uh, we're gonna get demnified by, by the power company. So, there, there will be an expansion coming in Purgatory Clay, as they put another two, perhaps, I think it is?
Three.
Three out there, but it, but it's not gonna be in the direct line of fire. It's gonna be in also. Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, make a motion in support of consideration, or in support of Resolution R. Two Thousand Eighteen, Twenty-three Oh-eight. A resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Bureau of Land Management, the county, and Dixie Power for the expansion of the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park and the addition of power lines. I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Number nine, consideration of Resolution Number R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Oh-nine. A resolution approving an amendment to an agreement between Washington County and Bluemont Building Services to provide custodial cleaning and maintenance services for Washington County buildings.
So I think Michelle is here.
Okay.
On behalf of Chris.
Thank you.
Yes, Michelle Baker with the Council on Aging. Um, in January of eighteen, Washington County entered into the contract with Bluemont for custodial services to certain Washington County buildings. Uh, today, the COA is just asking to amend that contract, to add the senior, the enterprise senior center to the contract. Uh, the reason for that is we're restructuring some of our positions up there and taking these janitorial duties out of one of the positions, hoping they can get some applicants for our vacancy.
So, Michelle, right now, we, we have it in-house in the other two?
Correct. The other two senior centers?
Yes.
That is correct. But that's the major portion, like, it is the position, our, our other two senior centers.
I think Bluemont's doing a Actually, they have. Good job. I haven't had plates, and, uh, this seems to me to be a, a good step for the senior center.
We're hoping so. Pardon?
You have a little bit of challenge still in this particular position.
Well, it's quite a mixture, so it's our Meals on Wheels driver, our dishwasher, and our janitor. Talk about harder to find applicants for. I don't know if this will help or not.
Well, I, are you gonna do that?
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
I'll, uh, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Oh-nine. A resolution approving an amendment to the agreement between Washington County and Bluemont Building Services to provide custodial cleaning and maintenance service for Washington County buildings.
I'll second.
The motion is second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Appreciate you.
Item number ten is consideration of Resolution Number R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Ten. A resolution approving for Utah County Participation Agreement. And we have our own public, our own tourism director now, Kevin Lewis.
Public tourism.
Yeah.
So this is, uh, a follow-up to a resolution that we passed, an inter-local agreement that we passed in December, I believe. An inter-local agreement with St. George City based on the RFP from Tour of Utah to host the event in August. And this is now the final contract that was ba, you know, the inter-local, original inter-local was based on the RFP for this contract. It's been through the attorney's office, um, both here and at St. George City, and things look good, so gratifying that.
Thank you, Kevin. I've had a chance to review the contract. I was really surprised by the specificity of it. It was very specific and, and detailed the room nights and the meals and, and every obligation there and of course, our county attorneys and your help in putting that together and coordinating that with the state of St. George. I make a motion in support of Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen, Twenty-three Ten. A resolution approving tour of Utah County Participation Agreement. I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Should be a neat event. Item number eleven is consideration of Resolution Number R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Eleven. A resolution amending general fees for services for the Washington County Library System. And we have our county library director, Bill Tucker.
Yes, thank you. We, uh, opened up a new Makerspace and we're providing new products. Uh, some of those, we wanted to get some, uh, get some, a fee structure set up to help offset the cost for some of those items that we're buying. Plastic for the 3D printer, wooden plastic for the laser cutter, and some other pots and ends. So, uh, we put in a, a, a section of, at the bottom there, of new items that we'd like to adjust, and then, then as we went through the, the entire page, we found that we were, we were overcharging some on, on our color printers. We were charging a dollar. I think the, the, the local cop here's only charged twenty-five cents, so we don't wanna compete with them. We still want them to have the better price, but we didn't wanna overburden our taxpayers, so we moved it down to fifty cents. Uh, and then, we, for, for the colors. And then laminating, we're, we're working with new supplies and, and it's a little more expensive, so we're raising the price there. Check fees also have gone up and we're raising the price there a little bit. Just, uh, adjustments here and there, and then the addition of the new fees for the Makerspace.
I have a question about the Makerspace. Is it starting to catch on? I mean, do you have fair amount of use?
Yes. Uh, there's only been one time it went down and there was nobody in the room. Uh, it was just the Makerspace administrator. Other than that, it's pretty consistent. There's, there's at least one person in there, uh, if not more.
It's only been, uh, what, one?
Yeah.
Or a couple of months, wasn't it? First of January?
First of January when it opened up. Yeah. So.
You're not open every day. It's like three days a week, four days?
No, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and some on Saturday.
The library also reviewed these, the library board reviewed these fees and, and also making a recommendation that these are the two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's see. If we're taking turns, I'm not sure. I guess it's my turn, so Resolution, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Eleven. Resolution amending the general fees for services for Washington County Library System. I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item twelve, consideration of Resolution Number R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Eleven. A resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County and the city of St. George regarding transferring ownership of seven parcels of real property and approving the execution of a quitclaim deed transferring ownership of those parcels.
Hi, I'm standing in for Kim today. Um, hopefully you have looked at and seen that most of these parcels have to do with roadways and things that the city was interested in acquiring. We became owners of them mostly from the tax sales. So it's more appropriate that they have use and ownership of them.
And, uh, these parcels haven't been purchased in a tax sale because they lie in roadways and things like that.
It's not something that somebody else could use. The city could use it, but
I just want to point that out. I would make a motion in support of Resolution R. Two Thousand Eighteen, Twenty-three Twelve. A resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County and the city of St. George regarding transferring ownership of seven parcels of real property and approving the execution of quitclaim deeds transferring ownership of the parcels. I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item thirteen is consideration of Resolution Number R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Thirteen. A resolution approving the temporary use of Washington County real property by the Utah Department of Transportation in Rockville for the construction of a bypass and temporary bridge across the Virgin River in Rockville, Utah. Ron?
Sitting with a tough crowd in the back today, so. Uh, this is to help facilitate Rockville's rehabilitation of the old iron bridge across the river. Uh, they need a little space to construct a temporary bypass road and a contemporary crossing across the river up there. The county has a piece of property just in the right spot for them to use, so. We issued a letter under your signature, Chairman, to, uh, the town of Rockville and UDOT to allow them to use that piece of property, and as soon as they're through with their project, they'll clear it off and it'll just be the county's property.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a goodwill towards Rockville and their construction project on that bridge and, uh, make a motion that we, uh, adopt Resolution R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Thirteen. A resolution approving temporary use of Washington County real property by the Utah Department of Transportation in Rockville for the construction of the bypass temporary bridge across the Virgin River in Rockville, Utah. I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item fourteen is consideration of Resolution Number R. Dash, Two Thousand Eighteen, Dash, Twenty-three Fourteen. A resolution appointing a board member to the Rockville Springdale Fire Protection Special Service District Administrative Control Board.
I'd be happy to speak to this, uh, Mr. Chairman. Rockville Springdale Fire Protection Service District, uh, has a functioning board, and although the county commission has, taken authority for items over ten thousand dollars, there are a lot of issues that that board needs to consider, and they are really where the rubber meets the road in interfacing with their community. Name has come forward, uh, and unanimously supported by, uh, both of the mayors that I've visited with. Mayor Pam Leach and Mayor Smith in Springdale. And the name that I would like to propose to fill the position that was vacated by Michael Young would be, uh, former mayor Dan McGuire. And his term, uh, trying to see on this resolution, Eric, do you know how long that, what's the balance of that term? So it would last until December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen?
Twenty-nineteen.
Twenty-nineteen.
Part of your brain. Very good, and I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item fifteen is consideration of a termination of software license agreement with Trinity Services Group, and we have James Stanley, Sheriff's Officer.
So, as it turns out, we have a lot of business and, um, opportunity to hear from different vendors who wanna provide services for our commissary out at the jail. Consequently, Trinity, who does our, or used to do our commissary services, has been buying up several companies around the nation, and while they're doing this, um, Keefe Swanson, those kind of places, who used to be the competitors, the service has been getting the, more and more poor with each purchase as it goes along, so we've been shopping around for other vendors. And we found one that we like, uh, which is actually CBM. But in order to do that, we've gotta terminate our agreement with Trinity. And this seems like a really good time to do it. The advantage of moving forward is if we don't like the way this, uh, CBM operates, we don't have to continue to use them to provide our, uh, software services. With Trinity, we do. We're kinda obligated to use their software. And we're not in love with it, and CBM has gone through the extensive efforts of making the agreements with Spillman to work in conjunction with that system, which is, as you may be aware, is very difficult to get Spillman to work with anybody, so this company's already done the legwork up front, and we like that a bunch, and we think this is probably the right way to go. a bunch. And we think this is probably the right way to go.
Great. I did notice in the contract, it specifically says, "Washington County Sheriff's Office may terminate this agreement at any time on prior written notice to Trinity." So we do have the right just in...
Correct.
...that any penalty, so.
Mr. Chairman, on the recommendation of the Washington County Sheriff's Office, I'd like to make a motion, I guess it's not necessarily a resolution, but terminate the software license agreement for Trinity Service Group.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Well, I guess it's termination passes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And now we come to item six, which is Commissioners' Report.
Well, I will just state that we did return from a very productive visit with our congressional staff and elected officials in Washington DC. And we had, I think, a real opportunity that we get only annually to meet with them and explain the issues that are so impactful of Washington County. And one of those is the Habitat Conservation Plan and its renewal. And because of the good working relationship we've got, we've got several of our congressmen willing to consider some legislation that we're proposing. And I would like to make the public aware right now that on March 28th, here in the county building, and I think right out in the hall there, oh, it's in the Dixie Center. We've moved it to the Dixie Center. Do you know which room? Was it Entrada?
Entrada, that's what they have.
In the Entrada Room, we're going to be there with maps to answer questions and show maps describing what we're trying to do. We're trying to expand the tortoise habitat with some BLM and sitland land that will provide an excellent opportunity to protect that valuable wildlife resource and also protect the recreational opportunities that we have out in that area as well. We're going to talk about the Northern Corridor and why we still feel that that's important and how the two interrelate to each other. So that's going to be at 6 o'clock, if I remember right?
Right.
That's what I'm shooting from the hip. But I do hope that we're going to get out to get a word out to everybody that they will come and ask questions and let us show and explain what we're doing and why we feel it's in the best interest of the county residents that we push forward with the expansion of the habitat and the renewal of the Habitat Conservation Plan.
I'd just like to echo how much we appreciate the delegation that works with us, Senator Lee and Senator Hatch's office and Congressman Stewart and our adopted Congressman, Congressman Bishop also. Does a lot of great work for us. Thanks to them.
I'd just like to remind everybody that it's caucus meeting tonight for both Republican and Democratic Party. Some of the other parties, their dates are a little bit different. And then I just wanted to disclose, so my son is going to be doing an Eagle Scout project out at the shooting park. It's, it's one of those things that I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of it. No one had any objections. I talked to Eric, our county attorney, and just said, hey, how should I handle this? Where my son's out there doing a little bit of work on county property. What he's doing is he's going to install an irrigation line and some trees out there. And we've worked with the shooting staff out there.
And let me guess, he's coordinating some other scouts and they're helping. And this is going to make the Shooting Sports Park better and it's going to teach some leadership skills at the same time.
Yes. But we are, like, we're going to have a county tractor out there to dig the hole for the trees.
Aye.
And so I just wanted to let everybody know that it's...
Well, I, I think that's great. And I think it's great that we can work with our scouts to do that. My youngest son worked with Washington City on a similar project. And it's still fun for me to drive by the bridge on 400 East and look and see his eagle project sitting there. And so I have absolutely no reservation. With proper supervision, that will be a good, good thing for all of them.
Good. Thanks. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what was going on. And he's not benefiting from it.
Oh, he's going to get an eagle badge.
Well, he'll get an eagle badge, but I'll get a lot of blisters too. So, all right. With that, there's no other items on our agenda. And so we will call this meeting to a close. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.